Good afternoon, and welcome to Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners, January 25, 2023 Transportation Workshop. Before I pass things over to Bonnie Wise for an overview, just want to make a couple of brief comments. Staff's presentation to us is essentially a starting point for today's discussion. During workshops, we typically do not take formal action, so the board today will provide direction to staff on our priorities, and staff will bring back a plan for the board to discuss for our February 15 board meeting. Should we have differences of opinion, I would just ask Ms. Wise to bring back options for the board to consider during our board discussion. And with that, I'll pass things over to Bonnie for an overview.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and welcome, Commissioners. This is, for some of you, your first transportation workshop, but for others, you have had several. And so some of it will be repetitive from what you've seen before, and I wanted to thank you for having this discussion. Just as a little background, the Florida Department of Revenue asked Hillsborough County to submit a proposed plan for the use of the $569,782,845 transportation surtax funds. And this amount does include the interest portion that was submitted by the clerk. It is what was because of the citizens-led initiative and the referendum that was held in 2018. And we have been directed to send our proposed plan to the state before the legislative session for 2023. So at this workshop, we're going to go over very programmatic and project options for the use of the returned sales tax dollars, surtax dollars. And we would, as the chairman mentioned, appreciate any direction the board could give us pursuant to our presentation. And as mentioned, no voting will take place today, but will take place at the February 15 board meeting when we present this plan to you. And then upon that approval, we'll submit something to the state for their consideration. And today, there's a few key points I wanted to mention. The $569 million, those are one-time funds, and so we should remember that we're just going to have it this one time, perhaps. And then the surtax dollars were collected throughout Hillsborough County, not just in the unincorporated area. They were collected throughout the county. So for the analysis that you'll see before you, we applied the state's shared half-cent sales tax formula that we use for other half-cent sales tax and for CIT as well, for the distribution of what it would look like if those ones were to be allocated to the three cities as well. And that was the assumption that we used there. And as you all are aware, the county's transportation system has many, many needs, and we're going to go through some of that with you. And so what we're providing you is a balanced initiative that will maintain the existing transportation system, improve safety, and advance projects that are already in the capital improvement program for the county, or some of those projects that are in there. And we are included in there some next-step CIP projects. And those are projects and monies that we reasonably think we could spend within the next three-year time period. And not all transportation CIP projects are included in this draft plan. Certainly, there's not enough money to do so, but the board has full discretion on which, if any, CIP projects and what phase you would like to include in the plan for submission to the state. So what we have before you is a plan that could be adjusted in so, so many ways and to match the surtax funds available. So this is an example, and there are certainly many. So for example, if the board did choose to submit, to share those dollars with that formula with the municipalities, we could then, for the county's share, use the money, $116 million for the next-step CIP, as indicated in your presentation. We could include the $130 million in repaving, $40 million for sidewalks. We could reduce the bridge funding for $20 million, intersection improvements to $81 million, corridor safety enhancements to $37 million, and trails, reduce those, eliminate that entirely. And that would still fall within the $424 million that would be allocated to Hillsborough County. That's just an example, because we know, we hear from you, we hear from citizens, how much repaving and sidewalks are so critical. And so that was why we mentioned that for your consideration. And then two, finally, when we submit this to the legislature, the legislature may consider our plan, they may modify the plan, or some variation in between there. So we don't really know, but there'll be certainly input, but we wanted to give our best estimate of the items that are most important, what we're hearing from you, hearing from the citizens in Hillsborough County. So we very much look forward to your comments and your input and your guidance as we help formulate this plan. I wanted to thank Josh Bellotti, Director of Engineering and Operations, and Kim Byer, Assistant County Administrator, and certainly Deputy County Administrator Greg Horwiddell, who has spent a lot of time on this, and also to John Lyons, who probably is not watching since his retirement. So this is our first workshop post-John Lyons, but who has had a huge impact throughout the years as well. And I look forward to your discussion. All of the staff, except for John, are available to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Josh.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you very much. Thank you, Bonnie. Bonnie kind of said it all, so it will allow me to be really brief. As she mentioned, with a lot of previous discussions that we've had on transportation and previous workshops, the reason that we are here today is to discuss the specific request from the state for the county to submit a plan. And so we'll get into the specifics of that. But first, I'll give just a real brief background, beginning with that citizen-led referendum back in 2018 for the 1% transportation sales surtax, which was passed in November 2018, began collection in 2019. Measure was challenged in the courts and was ultimately invalidated by the Florida State Supreme Court in 2021. And the revenue that had been collected up to that point, plus accrued interest, was remitted to the State Department of Revenue by the Clerk of Courts in 2022. So all in all, there's a total of nearly $570 million now with the state DOR. And again, as you are aware, they have directed Hillsborough County to submit a proposed plan for use of these funds prior to the start of the 2023 legislative session. So as I mentioned, the purpose of today's workshop is to present information to the board to consider with regard to the proposed plan to be submitted to the state. And in preparing for the workshop, staff is focused on an underlying framework that balances initiatives to improve safety for travelers on our transportation system, to maintain the existing transportation system in good condition, and to advance existing CIP projects to provide the most direct and immediate impact possible to the community. As we present this information today for consideration, the board will ultimately have full discretion as to which initiatives and in what funding amounts are ultimately included in the county's final plan that gets submitted to the state. The state's direction to the county to submit a plan did not mention any sub-distribution to municipalities. However, we recognize that the 2018 surtax collections took place throughout the county, and all county residents, including those in our cities, paid into the surtax. And so in light of that, staff has estimated what the distribution to our municipalities would be if we applied the state's shared half-cent sales tax formula. And so those dollar amounts are included here on this slide in your materials, and if the board chooses to incorporate that into the plan, it would result in a B OCC share of approximately $424 million. So as the board contemplates where to direct its share of these surtax dollars in this proposed plan, we offer some guiding principles for consideration. First is that these surtax dollars are one-time funds, so staff is focused on critical infrastructure needs. Second, we recognize that these funds were collected several years ago, so we look for opportunities to provide the most immediate impact with visible and meaningful safety and maintenance projects that can be substantially completed in the next several years. And finally, we look for opportunities to accomplish these objectives within the county's currently adopted capital improvement program. The county's adopted CIP has transportation projects and programs that are centered around the goals of preserving the transportation system, as well as making improvements to safety and mobility. And so we'll present the information organized into the seven categories listed here and discuss the potential impacts and outcomes associated with each of them. The first type of project, excuse me, the first type of project is roadway repaving. Now, just to start with the overall size of the roadway network, Hillsborough County has 7,400 total lane miles of roads, which is significant. And to put that into context, that's enough road to drive from here to Seattle, Washington, and back again. And the county conducts routine condition inspection and assessment of pavement condition. Each segment of roadway is assessed every three years based on industry standard, pavement condition rating. And this is what's used to prioritize roads in the worst condition for repaving. Now, for us to achieve an optimal system preservation, repaving roads on a 20-year cycle, or 5% of the roads annually, that would be approximately 340 lane miles each year, which we've discussed at previous asset preservation workshop. Since that time, pricing has continued to increase significantly to what is now an estimated $65 million. The current funding level that is dedicated to repaving in the CIP is only $5.4 million, which supports less than 1% of roads. So there's a significant gap in funding currently, and that presents an opportunity with this plan to include $130 million, which can provide an impact of repaving 680 lane miles of roads across the county. Next type of project is sidewalk repairs. Hillsborough County has approximately 17 million linear feet of existing sidewalks across the county. And the goal here is twofold: asset preservation, yes, but more importantly, to provide safe walking surface for pedestrians and reduce trip-and-fall injuries. But we have a lot of broken sidewalks across the county and a very high number of open repair requests. If you look at the bottom of this slide, that includes over 900 neighborhoods across the county and 1.6 million feet of needed repairs. And the county has also had to pay out injury claims for sidewalk trips and falls. The last 10 years have seen over $3 million in payouts. And we don't want to see anyone else get hurt on county sidewalks, but the current dedicated funding level accomplishes just a fraction of what's needed to make real progress. And so just as with repaving, we have seen cost escalation and pricing increases based on recent competitive bidding. So the total to complete all of these requests could approach $200 million. And even at the optimal level of annual funding, it would take years to complete. So with this plan, for the one-time surtax funds, we're showing a $40 million allocation, which will make an impact, enabling repairs to 300,000 linear feet of existing sidewalk. The next type of preservation project is bridges. And just as with the others, this has a safety element as well as asset preservation. The county has 279 bridges, which represents the largest bridge inventory of any local agency in the state of Florida. And our average bridge age is 41 years. We have bridges that are on evacuation routes, so critical infrastructure and evacuation scenario, as well as bridges that don't have an available detour route, so critical to maintain safe operation. And because of the time to develop, design, and permit a bridge replacement, it's important to be proactive in our preservation and in planning for replacements, so we don't face an unexpected closure. In an optimal scenario, we would be planning and programming 18 bridge repair and rehabilitation projects each year, and 20 bridge replacements over the next 10 years. However, the current dedicated funding level provides for just one bridge repair every two years and no dedicated funds for replacement. So for this plan, we're including $56 million in funding for a mix of 40 repair and rehabilitation projects, as well as 10 bridge replacements. So now we'll move from the projects that are asset preservation and into the safety and mobility. And the first type is intersection enhancement projects. And these are focused on improvements like turn lanes, medians, or other geometric alterations that reduce conflicts between vehicles and with pedestrians, enhancing safety for everyone moving through the intersection, as well as improving operational efficiency and reducing congestion. Again, looking to the CIP for opportunities, there are nine existing intersection projects currently underway at various phases of development but needing additional funding. And so there's an opportunity with this plan to fund these projects through to completion, as well as to make needed technology upgrades to the countywide traffic signal network. And these include things like upgrading to advanced signal controllers that provide real-time performance monitoring, allowing for proactive timing adjustments, as well as improvements in emergency vehicle response times and overall traffic flow. And so next up are a number of projects that are focused exclusively on enhancing safety of roadway travelers and working towards reducing severe and fatal crashes. Excuse me. In this plan, we have projects that are centered around providing safe walking routes for 22 schools across the county by adding new sidewalks, enhanced crossings, signs, and beacons. And additional projects include improvements for pedestrians and bikes to travel safely alongside and across vehicular traffic with signage, crossings, and pavement markings. And these are focused on corridors that are on the high-injury network in the county. And so they provide an opportunity to impact and reduce severe and fatal crashes, as well as to provide safer walks for students to and from school. And we also have, within the CIP, major corridor improvement projects that include additional lane and road capacity, these seven that are listed here specifically. And since these are large-dollar projects, as well as a long-term delivery, some can be up to a 10-year horizon, we've broken down the table to show the opportunity to fund the next phase of the projects, as well as what the remaining cost would be in the future. And so how much of these surtax funds to apply to each of these will be something for the board to consider in the proposed plan. And the last category project is the Trails Program. And in this case, in the current CIP, there are projects that would complete approximately 20 miles of trails, including the Upper Tampa Bay Trail, Phase 4, as well as a new pedestrian trail overpass over Big Bend Road near Water Set. And that's for a total of $66 million. So to recap and summarize, these are opportunities to fund transportation CIP projects with the previously collected surtax funds. We recognize that there may be other projects the board would like to include in the proposed plan, and we'll add those based on the board direction here today. The board does have full discretion on selecting which initiatives and which dollar amounts are included in the plan. We also recognize that the total cost for what staff has presented here, the $589 million, exceeds the surtax amount available. And based on board discussion and direction today, staff will need to adjust the plan to match the B OCC share, which would be the $424 million if the board elects to apply the state's shared half-cent sales tax formula discussed earlier. So then the next steps will be that, following the board discussion and direction today, staff will finalize our proposed plan to bring back to the February 15 B OCC meeting for board approval, and then submit it to the state prior to the start of the legislative session. At that point, it'll be up to the legislature to ultimately decide how to proceed. As Bonnie mentioned, they may approve the county's proposed plan or choose to modify it. We don't know at this time what level of involvement the county will have in that process. So with that, I will just thank you for your time and let you know that we are here to answer any questions at all that you might have during your discussion. Thank you.
Thanks, Josh, for that thorough presentation. Don't see anyone in the queue right now, so I'm going to go ahead and make a few comments, and then we can open it up for additional board comments or discussion. First of all, I want to say that I liked the guiding principles that were considered by staff in putting together this presentation. For me personally, I think that we should prioritize projects that are, number one, shovel-ready, that can have an immediate impact, and have the biggest impact on improving our residents' quality of life. And I can tell you from experience, the two areas that meet all that criteria and that my office has always heard the most from our citizens about, and that's resurfacing in sidewalks. I can just tell you that, at least from District 2 perspective, I can only assume. I don't want to assume other districts, but those are the two areas that we hear about on a daily basis. And candidly, I know with some of the sidewalk improvements, last year, staff was improving those that have been on the unfunded list since 2013, to kind of put it into unfortunate perspective. Couple other things. I do feel, I concur with Bonnie and her comments as far as the cities should be included, their residents paid the sales taxes as well, so we should definitely include them in our plan. One thing that didn't come up that I think, I feel very strongly that we should do is that we should use the same paradigm or methodology that is consistent with how we handle the ARP funding with respect to sidewalks and resurfacing per district. For those Commissioners that were here, you know what I'm referring to. I don't know if it was unincorporated linear miles or what it was, but it was a methodology that was, I think, fair, and the board supported doing that. On the corridor congestion relief, essentially the road projects, I like the fact that we're funding the next phase for a number of projects that have been on the unfunded list for years. I can tell you, again, from experience, I've been working on trying to widen Van Dyke since at least 2008, so I'm pleased that we're taking that next step. It doesn't fully fund it, still have construction, but it gets us one step closer. Bonnie, I'd like to see the example that you gave brought back as an option for us as far as splitting up on the buckets, and perhaps you might want to review those numbers. I started writing them down, but I think I missed a million here or a million there, so would like for you to go over that again. And then lastly, last comment I'll make for now, in that option or recommendation, you had zero for the trail projects. I'd like to know what the dollar amount is for the next phase for, I know there's Upper Tampa Bay Trail, but we have other trails. What is the next, how much of the dollar amount associated with the next phase? I think for the final phase of Tampa Bay Trail, I think it was six or seven million or eight million, but I'm not sure. And so just let us know what that is. And with that, we'll open it up, and we have Commissioner Cohen's first.
Thank you. I'll be very brief, because I agree with generally most of what, if not all, of what Commissioner Hagan just said. I do have a question. How are you dealing with county-owned roads inside the municipalities? Where do those fall in terms of this analysis?
So we do have maintenance agreements with the cities where we have county roads, and we would also, where we have capital replacement and repair responsibility for those roads, include those in our prioritization amongst our other needs across the county. So I guess the short answer would be that it would be evaluated and included within our plan to prioritize where to put the funds.
Because I think that when we start talking about the money that goes to each of the different districts, and I agree that the formula that was used last year is probably the best guide to how that'll be done. I know that in District 1, a lot of the worst, the worst roads are, in some cases, county roads within the city limits. So between, you know, as you work through this and take direction and sort of finalize what it is that's going to be included on the list, that's going to be something I'm going to want to look at as we go. But I agree that, I think that, you know, these are all the major goals that we have across the county in terms of things that need to be improved. And I think your approach makes sense, and I think that this is a very, very good starting point.
Thank you. Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do agree with both comments from Commissioners Hagan and Cohen. I do support the funding going back to the municipalities. I think that's very important, and it shows their collaborative partnership with the board and municipalities. And Bonnie must be was reading my mind last night, because I deleted everything, no, I deleted the trail. I'm saying that's a luxury item, and we don't really need that, but everything else, to me, is public safety. And when we think about our sidewalks and the liability that we already paying, now when someone get injured just walking on our sidewalks, and also this allows the students who's walking to school, that we can extend some of the sidewalk where we have no sidewalks. So I support everything in here except the trail. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Owen?
Thank you, everybody, for, thank you for the presentation. And I fully expect that I'm going to be standing alone in this situation. And I understand that. And I've heard Commissioners say, when you run for office, you try to fulfill your promises when you're there. So first thing I wanted to ask Ms. Wise, we're submitting, so the Florida Department of Revenue has requested for us to submit this to them. The legislature has not asked us for any comments. Is that correct? Just a question.
I think that's true. We don't know what the process will be once we submit the plan.
Yeah.
We may be requested to provide some feedback, but we don't know that at this time.
Okay. Yeah, it's just, it's interesting, because I, you know, I'm not here to argue whether or not the final ruling by the Supreme Court was right or wrong. That is not why I'm here. But it is a final order. It's similar to me if someone taking money out of my pocket and then law enforcement saying, "It's your money," but we're going to go ahead and let them spend it anyways. So I kind of look at that, similar to this, and I think it's really, really important that, I think we understand the formula and everything. Listen, I understand having a balanced approach, and if I was in other districts, I'd be the same, or if I was a countywide Commissioner, I'd be the same. But one of the things that I'm going to focus on, that I want to focus on widening Lithia Pinecrest Road. I do believe that the reason these funds are here because of District 4 office, not because of me, but because of my predecessor. And I am going to do everything that I can to make sure that these funds are focused on roads, potholes, repaving, because I think that's, I think that's the appropriate measure. Again, I do understand that I'm probably going to be standing alone on this, but at the end of the day, this is going to be the legislature's decision, not ours. And I think there's a reason for that. I think there's a reason that the legislature is going to be made to make this decision. So I'll probably be standing alone on this. I wonder what the procedure is. Are we going to come back and actually take a vote on a final proposal after you all put this together? Is that how it works?
That is the plan. Except we will bring back the proposed plan.
Okay.
With options.
With options. No? Say that again, I'm sorry.
The plan right now is to bring an item to the February 15 B OCC meeting, and what I'm hearing is that might need to include options. But at that point, to answer your question, the board will be voting on approving a plan that will be submitted to the state.
So say it was a six-to-one vote. Would it say this is the Board of County Commissioners' proposal or approved proposal? Or will it state, you know, that one Commissioner or two Commissioners do not agree with this proposal?
I'll take that for you, Josh. It will be a vote of the board. This is the Board of County Commissioners' recommended plan.
Okay. Okay, well, and that's really, I don't have too much to say other than that. I know that this is just the beginning stages of this, but I know that the legislature's going to make this decision fairly quick. Ms. Beck, is there anything that would prevent the legislature, you know, we had two cases, and I don't want to talk procedure, I don't want to talk about anything specific to the cases, but is there anything that would prevent the legislature from this session from making the decision on these funds?
Not that I'm aware of, Commissioner. They did the proviso on their own, really, in a, you know, in a unique way back at the end of the last session, but they have taken control of the process, as I understand it.
Okay, okay. All right. Well, that's really all I have. I will make just some comments. I do agree with the other Commissioners on trails and, you know, I just don't see, you know, I do agree again that these, all of these things are important to Hillsborough County. And I understand that each Commissioner has things that are very important to them in their district that they want to see done. So I hope nobody takes it that way, but for me personally, I am going to fight to make sure that Lithia Pinecrest Road gets widened with these funds, because these funds are there. I understand that's a big chunk. It's close to $200 million is what it shows. But I am going to do everything I can to see if I can get those funds directed that way. So thank you.
Commissioner Kemp?
Thank you. So right now, just this proposed list here is $569 that you put, I mean, I'm sorry, at the end here.
I think it's on page 14, 589.
589. That's, okay, I thought I heard you say that. So we're, but you're saying, like, the county's share would be 424, so we've got, like, $175, $165 million more than what the county's share would be if they did it that way. And is this just because we're, we might just pass it in that capacity or even more, and the legislature could just kind of know that all of these projects are our priorities, whatever we pass on? And they obviously can't fund all of them, even if they used all the money from every jurisdiction. Is that, that's the thought?
Right. So our projects here are 589. Right. So our, our projects here are 589. The total is only 569.
Okay, that's what, yes.
It's close.
569, right, right, right.
Yes.
But, but the total for the county's share of it, unincorporated county share is 424.
424. And you said unincorporated, I just want to clarify, because that does include, the county does get a little bit extra for those roads in the city. So the way the formula works, we do get a little bit.
Right, right. But the 424, I just, okay, great. I just wanted to establish that, because this list is already, already far more than we could possibly get, even if they gave us every cent, even if they left out the counties and cities. It's far more. So I just want to emphasize that. And so we're giving them a bigger list, which I'm fine with, to give them a bigger list of these priorities, because we don't know what priorities might come out of that, but they're asking for our recommendation. I actually am, I'll just say this, you tick, you checked off all the boxes for me, pretty much, Commissioner Hagan, with, when you went down that list. I know I've heard you talk about preservation, and I utterly and absolutely agree with you. As I understand it, after a road is 17 or 20 years without being attended to, maintained, we end up costing us a lot more money in maintenance, as it is. And we have a severe backlog of under-maintained, I mean, you can see from this list, and thank you, staff, I mean, I think you did a great job, Josh, Kim, Greg Hordell, putting this all together and compiling for us. And I also really much appreciated seeing those maintenance costs over time. It kind of is mind-boggling, and I've been through this a lot of times, to even understand the demand that we already have in place with the roads and sidewalks we have, without even adding a thing. And things are getting added all the time. And so I just would, those are really, really big numbers, but I totally support those buckets. I also, and Commissioner Hagan, you brought this up, and I think it's important, that trails are part of that. There's been a lot of support in the legislature for expanding trails. And I'll just say, the Upper Tampa Bay Trail, but I even like the general trail, but the Upper Tampa Bay Trail in particular, I don't, look at it as just a leisure amenity. People use it for actual travel back and forth, not just that trail, but a lot of the other trails. It's an alternative for people to sometimes go to the grocery store, to sometimes do other things in a safe way. And this is one of the most dangerous counties, as you know, in the entire nation, bar none, for pedestrian and bicycle deaths. And it's important that we add that in, not to mention that, on the Upper Tampa Bay Trail, which has lacked a connection for decades now, 300,000 people a year use that trail. It's the number-one amenity, park amenity, and I call it park amenity, but people use it all the time in Hillsborough County. And so I'd like to definitely give the legislature the option, if so inclined, to support those trails. I'd also like to go for adding something to the list, again, as an option for, to be considered. And that's the Operation and Maintenance Center for Heart. Heart has some 700 employees that are working in that center all the time. It's a refurbished trucking center from the 1950s. It's badly flooding, the roof is leaking, they've, we have, you know, we've talked a lot about veterans. There's, I'm surprised at the number of veterans that are actually driving buses as a second career for our transit agency, that go to work in that building day after day. It's very much in need of actually building a new building. They've got that plan. They have 75 million of the 100 million needed. And I'd like to just add in there, as an option, 25 million for that building to move forward, because it is, it's desperately needed. And we're talking about mobility and moving people, and how to get people around, and transportation investment, which was made by the citizens of this county. And I think, I think that that would be much appreciated as well. But otherwise, I very, very much agree with Commissioner Hagan's focuses, but I would say that, you know, again, in roads, sidewalks, bridges, safety, intersection improvements, and then in terms of the, in the schools, the safety and mobility, the safe streets of schools is desperately, desperately needed. And I would say the shovel-ready projects, I'm really looking at, which is the Big Ben, Big Ben Road and the university area improvements to, that are actually beyond design and ready, ready to go with some investment there. Those are big numbers there. But those are what I would, I'd like to see if we could add that Operations and Maintenance Center. I'd like to see the trails back in. And again, we're already going over any number we could get. I do want to see the different jurisdictions in the city, which, as Commissioner Hagan said, they all supported this, too. So that's, that's where I'm, I'm landing on this.
Thank you. Commissioner Wostel?
Thank you, Chair. I'm not going to get into weeds on this, but one thing, Bonnie, that was said that I think is important, well, first is that no one on the board is standing alone on this. This is an unusual vote. And this is not us approving a rezoning or passing an ordinance. This is not us exacting something on the community in a normal vote. So it would be important to me that each specific Commissioner's interests are not highlighted as this being a group decision, because we're voting on illegally taxed dollars. So it would be very important to me that this not be a typical, hey, a majority of the board said this, and this is the will of the voters. This is a highly unusual, unprecedented action, and that, that would be extremely important for me to find a creative way for us to not, this is, this, to me, does not seem like a normal board action, and it shouldn't be, shouldn't be exacted in the same way. That's all.
Commissioner Owen?
Yeah, real fast, too. Ms. Beck, the legislature has the right also to, you know, settle all possible legal fees. This may not be the exact amount of money that we have, that we're dealing with, that we're talking about as well, right? Legislature has broad discretion to resolve any other matters, or fees, or anything associated with, say, the other lawsuits or whatever. You don't know?
I honestly, I don't know how to answer that question about the lawsuits, but I will agree with you that they, they have exercised their discretion, and if they pass a law, we are subject to it.
Okay, good, good. Yeah, and I, you know, I guess the last thing I'd just say, and caution, caution us as, as a body, is that, you know, I, I sure would want them to take what we send them seriously, and not follow, not, not just throw it out the window, which I think is a possibility. So I really would, would encourage us, as we move forward, to come up with a plan that, that I think is, again, focused on, on roads and infrastructure. So, thank you.
Commissioner Cohen?
So, it seems to me that, after listening to Commissioner Kemp, I'm a little bit unclear. It sounds like we have some choices, in the sense that we can send up a list that equals the amount of money that we think they're going to have for us, that we can also send up, apparently, a list that's larger than that, with the idea that perhaps they would pick and choose from it. I'm not, and I, they may not, it may not be clear to anybody at this point, whether it, this is just going to be a blanket appropriation back to us, or would it be appropriated for specific things? We don't, we don't even know that, do we?
We don't really know that. Although I think what we were requesting for your consideration is maybe if you did determine that you think that we should allocate to the municipalities, which I'm hearing predominantly, yes, that probably what we present maybe totals the 424 million then, and then we say plus, you know, the city's share. Because I think some determination of what the board finds most important should be reflected in the plan that we present.
And just as a follow-up to Commissioner Kemp's question about the Heart Maintenance Facility, didn't we give them some money for that last year? And wasn't some of it contingent on what happened with the referendum? Just refresh our memory about the history of that, of our involvement with that, if you would?
I'll do from what I can remember as well. We did allocate, I think it was 15 million, and it was over a number of years. It was contingent upon them receiving some matching dollars, though, which I'm not sure if that has happened. However, if the referendum passed, then our obligation was going to be relieved for the portion that we had not paid yet.
But it didn't, and so we still are on the hook for the 15 million that we promised last year. So, you know, I think, when, and I may have misunderstood, but I think, Commissioner Kemp, when you made your suggestion, it sounded to me like you were assuming the list was going to be larger than the 424 million dollars, that it would, you know, be six or seven, and that they, they could sort of pick and choose from it. My sense, from what you're saying, is that it, it will probably be a smaller number, and therefore, adding things to it, keeping the trails in, it would be going in the opposite direction of the direction we're trying to go, right? Money-wise.
Perhaps.
So, I think we have, we're going to have to make a decision on the 15th. Are we going to stick to 424? Are we gonna, you know, go for a larger number and say, "These are our needs here," you know, "Give us your, here, Legislature, give us your input by telling us what you want to fund." I'm not exactly sure. But, and then just as a comment to Commissioner Owen, you know, it seems to me that the board is going to decide on this. It'll be public record how everybody voted. I don't think you're any, under any obligation not to lobby the legislature to do what you want them to do, in the same way that any of us could do that, if we wanted a project funded in our district, or it was something that we, that we cared about, right? I mean, this is just a, an expression of the majority of the board. So, anyway, thank you.
Commissioner Cameron Sepeda?
Yes, I believe that fixing our roads is one of the top priorities that we have here in the county. And also, but I don't agree with the trails, spending $66 million on trails right at this time. We have all these issues. Not only the roads are so damaged, so bad, so badly, that they're damaging vehicles, but also for safety reasons, and the $66 million can be used, put towards fixing our roads.
Thank you. Couple of final comments here. Just to kind of put it, our needs in perspective, at least with respect to District Two. District Two alone, there's over $60 million in unfunded needs and resurfacing, and 60 million in sidewalks alone. So I think that kind of really puts it into perspective. And like I mentioned, last year, on some of the repairs that were being made on the sidewalks, they were literally from 2013. That's kind of frightening, but it's the unfortunate reality. I think Commissioner Owen made a good point, as far as the prerogative of the legislature. There could be attorney fees associated with this, there could be a refund process associated with this. So the final amount may, may well be, may be below the $569 million that we're discussing today, so we should just be prepared for that, for that to be the case. With respect to Commissioner Owen's comments, as far as fighting for Lithia Pinecrest, as a district commissioner, I can, I appreciate that. It reminds me, many, many years ago, when I was in a similar situation with the Bruce B. Downs. That was a number-one unfunded project for probably a decade, and it took probably a decade for me to be able to assemble, at that point, it was about 100 million, which seemed like a big number. It required a number of funding sources. We finally were able to get it done. You know, we'll have that discussion more in depth at our next meeting. It's probably going to be a challenge for me to get there, only because of the, the years it's going to take to even get to that next phase. And with so many shovel-ready projects, and so many needs throughout the county, it's hard to set, and the fact that the, that the staff can't even give us a firm number of what the next phase would cost, is kind of a challenge to set aside, part, you know, say 20 million, 40 million, you pick the number, when that money could go to work today in another area. So, but I respect you fighting for it, and I did the same thing, and so I know what you're going through. So from what the notes I've taken down today, in addition to the one option that Bonnie identified earlier, at our next meeting, we're going to discuss, or have, and/or vote on Operation Maintenance Center for Heart, potentially additional funding for Lithia Pinecrest, next phase of the various trail projects. I don't think any other specific project was identified that we want to have a discussion on. So what I'm thinking is, at our next meeting, I guess it's somewhat kind of like the flagging process for the Commissioners that have been here. We may vote on each up or down, and then vote on the final one, but we'll, I guess we'll kind of play that by ear. But I want to make sure that all those are brought back for board discussion, one way or the other. Are you good with that, Bonnie?
Yes, and you had asked previously about Upper Tampa Bay Trail and the dollar amount, and Josh, that's 9 million, right?
Yeah, yeah. And we'll, we'll bring that together with the rest of the trails for you at the next meeting, too.
Okay. Any other specific project that we want to just have on the table for discussion for next time? I think we've got a pretty good list here, and a very good foundation and, and starting point. But we're free to make those decisions at our February 15th board meeting. We'll make changes, one way or the other. That's certainly at our discretion to do it at that time, right?
Yes, and we very much appreciate your input. It helps give us guidance. We appreciate you meeting with us in advance of this meeting, too. That's how we can help formulate the plan that best serves you.
Okay. Well, I think it was great, great feedback, great discussion, and no other comments. We're dismissed. Thank you.